Tulgetzky?
Here.
Watson?
Here.
McCain? Wertz? Hyon?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Rust?
Here.
Handfelder?
Here.
My flag allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Time for a public comment, if anyone wishes to comment, three minutes, please. No public comment, okay. Omnibus Agenda. The following items will be approved in one motion unless any board member wishes to have an item pulled prior to the vote. Mr. Handfelder, did you want to pull something? Are the bills, any of the bills? Okay. All right. Do we have a motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call for the vote.
Tulgetzky?
Yes.
Watson? Handfelder?
Yes.
Hyon?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Motion passed. Informational items. Grants and sponsored contracts. Lori, are you going to inform us?
So, items L through P are in your board book if there's any questions on the grants or sponsored contracts. I do, I do just want to draw your attention to two upcoming events on campus. And the first one is, on Monday, we're hosting what's called Discover Day. So, we'll be open when a lot of our area school districts are closed and we send out postcards and invite all of our area high school students. So, we'll have a day full of activity out here on campus for parents and potential students to come and visit. Student activities, we'll, we'll have, we'll have information tables and, and activities set up for all of our guests to take part in. So, that'll be on Monday. And then, on the 22nd of February at 1:30, the men's and women's basketball teams both have a home game. And at halftime, I don't know where Sean is. Is it the women's game or is it in between the games?
Well, the football?
Yeah, yeah.
The women's.
So, at halftime, the halftime of the women's game, which they play first, we'll be honoring the women's soccer team, just like we did for the board here, just giving them a little special recognition and just trying to create a crowd for our men's and women's home game as well. So, just wanted to bring your attention to those two events. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Chris Reynolds, who is our Associate Professor of Automotive Technology. We're just going to spotlight our automotive technology program. I think he's got some faculty and students with him as well, so, Chris.
Okay, I was asked after, I don't know, maybe the last meeting, to come in and give a presentation about our needs as a program. And collectively, the faculty group has set a list of things, things that we've done as a program over the years, so I'll walk through it and talk to you guys about our needs for a facility in the process. So, Autotech Program has demonstrated a commitment to serving in district and partnering out-of-district students by way of training the service technicians of tomorrow. Our program's success is a result of student interest, advisory committee involvement, CTE support, secondary CTE educators, invested post-secondary faculty members, our feeder schools that support our program. In the past 11 years, our program has hosted two Illinois College Automotive Instructor Association conferences. Two of the faculty in the program are board members on that group. We saved that conference in 2018 by being able to host it here. We've hosted the Summer Mobile Air Conditioning Society AC Boot Camp, which is the first time in history that the Mobile Air Conditioning Society has left Pennsylvania. If you're not familiar with MAX, MAX is the consumer and service side of EPA compliance. They set standards for certification for technicians coast-to-coast. They're one of a handful of bodies that certifies technicians to work on mobile air conditioning systems to be compliant with federal law. Let's see. We've also received inventory support from local dealers, independent repair facilities, and generous vehicle manufacturers, Ford and Subaru being two of those manufacturers. Our program has received multiple grants and our grant support from Title III WEOHA funds, the Department of Labor, the National Science Foundation, Perkins, and Macomb Community College, which is an NSF center located in Warren, Michigan. We have traveled the Midwest for conference attendance and presented our success and grant work and program involvement from Washington DC to Carbondale, Illinois as a program. Curriculum developed in-house has also been shared globally via Macomb Community College's outreach, reaching from intercontinental United States to last year, a partner in South America that reached, got my email and said, "Hey, we want to use your guys' hybrid curriculum from years ago that you developed." So, furthermore, our program, faculty have demonstrated their commitment to community by working with the College Foundation Board to build a memorial scholarship in the name of the late, outstanding automotive technology student Dylan Mckina, a former resident of Carlinville, Illinois. Auto faculty are vested in this institution and intend to enhance our program's offerings to increase the technical skills required of the service industry. In addition, multiple students have participated in campus inter-community volunteering events from our program to support causes in the community, such as a bench for Blake. We collected bottle caps from baseball teams, from the Gulf to the Midwest, from football teams. Our students have brought, I don't know how many buckets, to support that cause. Senior vehicle inspections at two senior vehicle centers in the counties we serve. Our students have been able to go to Gateway and Worldwide Technology Center to work racing events. They get to see cars going 330 miles an hour in three to four seconds, just because they volunteered to guide people to their seats. And faculty and staff live work, which are services we provide for faculty and staff through our student club. As a flagship program, we've made success in the industry we serve. Below is a brief list of employers who we are grateful to work with or receive feedback from in an effort to enhance our student potential. Enterprise Holdings. They recruit here every year. Co-Coordinator Benjamin Cook works for Enterprise Holdings, providing service recommendations for the enterprise fleet from coast-to-coast. ByState Development Agency. We have roughly five to six students right now working for MetroLink, starting out at nearly $60,000 a year, working on buses, even though we don't have that program. Quality GMC Buick Cadillac. They've helped us in the past go through our last accreditation process. Munganast Alton Toyota. We have a lot of students that also work there. Centurie Illinois Trucking, graduates of the past, encourage the students to work at that site in Troy, Illinois. Hertz Fleet. We've got a Hertz Fleet gentleman back here in St. Louis County. Tucker's Automotive in Alton. Tesla in Chicago and St. Louis. General Motors. Our first female graduate in many years is now a corporate employee for GM in the Detroit metropolitan area. Roberts Motors is very supportive, as long as, as well as Ford Motor Company. Last semester, we got notification from Subaru that we are part of the Subaru University now, where our students can access factory Subaru credentials while in a two-year community college in the Midwest. Alljets Automotive, being on our advisory committee. Al's Transmissions, a graduate of our program who owns a very successful transmission shop in Edwardsville, Illinois. Dobbs Auto and Tire. Their training manager is part of our advisory committee as well. Auto Tire. We have a traveling manager that's a graduate of the program that works with Auto Tire. St. Charles Missouri Park and Recreation. The coordinator of all the maintenance for that, that site is on our advisory committee and a certificate graduate of the program. And we see a forklift manufacturer in the Midwest. I never thought a forklift company would reach out to us, but the technology transfers, the diagnostics transfer just the same. Many of the listed sites, as stated earlier, are also involved in our advisory committee, which meets mainly twice per year to demonstrate the commitment of our program and to maintain compliance with the National Institute for Automotive Service Excellence Education Foundation, who is our accrediting agency. We've been a master certified program since 1997, under the watch of former coordinator Ron Tuken and former instructor Harry Giffen, who have both retired. They have made, ASE has made recommendations in the past to address facility needs, secure vehicle storage, and more overall support for our core program. As faculty, we must maintain compliance with ASE Education Foundation for employment requirements. We have to maintain compliance with their standards to operate our program. And repair technicians for broadly acceptable, yet specialized aftermarket certifications. Not only has this notion been documented during site accreditation events, reaching back to 2013 and going earlier than that, it's also been documented past discussions regarding capital planning this past year. Let me answer here, sorry, guys. Emails, program review in 2016, and face-to-face meetings we've had on-site. Previous program coordinators have, have really made similar requests with limited support for facilities. So, we're going to address kind of what those needs are in a moment. Last semester, nearly 90% of our program students successfully completed the ASE Education Foundation End of Program Assessments, which is a typical success rate for our industry, or entry-level industry certifications within our program. That's nine out of 10 is pretty good to get the fact, or the entry-level certifications. All AAS students are required to complete US EPA Section 609 certification, Ford Automotive Career Exploration Training, and this semester is the, the release of the Subaru University Training, which further demonstrates our program's interest in real-world requirements that serve the industries that support us. Auto intends to expand offerings into the medium heavy-duty truck, bus, inter-trans service areas, but has a difficult time, difficult time utilizing the antiquated facilities for our core and priority program, which is automotive technology. That's why we're here. We have recruiters come in, they give us access, they make requests to us, so we're going after something more than what we can operate with right now. With enrollment in the past decade, ranging from around 120 to 55 students, our need for space has not declined. Each student is required to own or be assigned a toolset based on ASE Education Foundation requirements. Our program is required to possess a significant amount of equipment for accreditation compliance, and also, feedback our program has received from employers showing support for facilities has been present. Implications of going after a facility and supporting this part of our program. Developing a new facility for Auto will allow our program to positively respond to recommendations made by the ASE Education Foundation that have been ongoing. Advisory committee members have made recommendations, students, employers, and faculty members. Size pending, the automotive technology program will be capable of expanding offerings to supermarket with higher pay scales within and beyond our district. So, development of a new facility will help us in the following manners. First one is demonstrating commitment to ASE Education Foundation's ongoing recommendations from 1997 through 2013. We were lucky during our last visit and our facilities were not criticized in 2018. Enhance Auto's perspective by potential students and campus visitors. We have a beautiful campus. I think we're all in agreement with that. What's inside is what matters to us as a program, where we need a lot more space. Enhance the workable space for student, faculty, and club usage within the program, and allow potential for expansion, as currently zero-service bays, based on the lifts and the equipment we have, can handle a medium heavy-duty or truck footprint. If the board or any members of the community would like to tour our current facilities or review available accreditation documents, we are willing to provide those to support this notion.
That's a great, great presentation, thank you. It sounds like you guys are doing a great job. Is there any way you could use temporary facilities, maybe off-campus, to get this going until we can secure funding to?
I think that would be plausible and possible. Last year, Ben Cook and I got ahold of a, a local Realtor and said, "Hey, the old Colson Barker is for sale. Can you take us on a tour just to see if there's something we're interested in?" I don't think the facilities there would accommodate, but it is likely that there may be facilities in the region that would accommodate. The only criticism I would have of that is that our AAS students would be leaving a remote site somewhere else in the district. If they don't have a remote campus nearby, or they can't make it to the main campus for their general education-required classes within the Associate and Applied Science, it could be problematic for their scheduling. Our classes run typically five-hour sections, eight to one or five to 10.
So, they, they do need to come on campus for those kind of studies?
Yes.
Okay. Because I'm wondering, too, if this is an opportunity to have, you know, something in Jerseyville, or, you know, someplace where maybe we're not reaching students right now, have something going on there to attract them in, or in Edwardsville, or Granite City, or, you know, near there. So, just a way to draw students in and to show people out in the district that we're interested in getting students from the area.
Absolutely.
You said 120 students. Is that at one time, or is that like going through the program in a year, or?
That is four years, so, records that we got, the, was this last week? I think we got them last week. 2015, we had 123 listed Associate and Applied Science students. This year, we've got 54 Associate and Applied Science students. So, it's a pretty significant reduction, but that's, that's a sign of the times. People are going back to work in the masses, but we still have to provide training for our district.
Are there opportunities to work with FFA, the ag departments at various high schools? Some offer welding, some agronomy, some, you know, they offer different programs. I didn't know if any of them offered mechanics, or if it was a separate program at some of the high schools, whether we could contact them to attract more students here. And as a side note, I've visited your place and I thank you for the tour, and I realize the, the need for a bigger, better facility for you. It's definitely needed.
I do appreciate it. To answer your question, there are only three programs in the district we serve directly that have automotive. Jerseyville, Alton, and Roxanna. I don't know if their facilities can accommodate it. It's possible. I know one of the, the NSF grant that we're working on right now, we plan to reach out to markets in a more rural-based area and in more urban-based area to, to partner with both sides of the districts to collect aid and expand opportunities for both. But that's definitely a possibility. There's a lot of equipment in Jersey County, in McCupin County, in Green County I drive past frequently, so.
Of your most recent graduates, how, how many of the, of them would be, would you say would estimate, how many would you estimate to be unemployed right now?
Well, the industry is, I have to hit this first, because the industry is one that's, that's kind of frustrating for people. Depending on where a student goes, when they complete, they might go change oil for three years and really not like it and go, "I'm going to go install satellite television." Or they might decide that they're going to go in the masses to work for MetroLink at about $60,000 a year starting pay. We've got some recent graduate, a recent graduate back here. How many graduates of our program work at your site that have graduated with you in the past three years? Five graduates at Hertz Fleet. And based on the numbers, I would say, I can, I can get more data if you need it specifically.
Sounds to me like it's almost zero unemployed.
Yeah.
They're all working.
The service industry is, is very secure. They could leave here and go to Montana and find a job working on something, so.
I sent, passed on an email to Lori, but there's a national convention for trustees going on in Washington DC, and I think the article said that there, there's $40 million available for, I guess, first come, first served, you know, apply for grants, 40 million bucks. And, and they were emphasizing technology training at all community colleges that we need to provide for the job market, whether it might be mechanics, carpenters, cement people, brick, I don't know, but 40 million dollars in that, and I forwarded that to you to look at.
Yeah, those are Department of Labor funds, and I had forwarded that to Brett, too, just to make sure it was on his radar screen. I know they're, they're looking for those fundings. I think you, Brett, you could speak to it better than I. In the past, it's supported apprenticeship.
Right, right.
Specifically said CTE programming, but.
Yeah. DOL's entire focus from a grant perspective is CET, CTE, almost exclusively. So, they, they really do that. A big emphasis of DOL since probably in the last 10 years has been apprenticeship-type programs. Those are a real interesting phenomenon, because they require, we, we wouldn't necessarily be eligible to apply as an individual organization. We could be the education provider as part of a team of organizations or a group that applied, but we wouldn't necessarily be able to. Apprenticeships also, you know, you have to have a, an education partner, also, a, an employer that desires like a pipeline of graduates. And so, we've lost a lot of our single large employers, so it kind of makes it a challenge to organize those. But there's a lot of things we can look at. We do monitor the Department of Labor grants, so we're aware what's come down pipe.
I would definitely like to see enhancement in the high school programs. I think it would do a lot for our community. My son is 14 and has expressed interest, and he loves cars, so learning about cars, and he wants to work on exotic cars. So, having that available in the high school curriculum, I think, would attract them here as well. I'm not really sure how to implement that, but I think it would be, I think it would be great for our community.
Absolutely. Very advanced industry. People don't think of it that way. We all took a car to get here, didn't we? A lot of communication, a lot of high priority items that are on that vehicle that we take for granted as consumers.
Yeah, and nobody can really work on their own car anymore like they used to.
Yep.
Like I used to, ha ha, yeah.
Any other questions? Chris, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great presentation, thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Discussion items.
Yeah, I think the, the next item is the construction status report. It's on page 337 in your packet. Just an update on the main complex foundation improvements. There are bids that are going to be out in March, and the anticipated start date on that project is nicely timed with our commencement, so, so we'll try to work when they, when they do, when CDB does award that project, we'll try to work with that, whoever that successful bidder is, to make sure there's no interference there. Nothing new to report on the Haskell Hall fan coil replacement, still waiting on CDB and Brick there. But I did just want to mention that all of the furniture has been received and installed in Riverbend Arena, and we're getting all those folks moved back in this week and next, so we are just about there on Riverbend Arena. Any questions? All right. I think the next item, Dr. Sean Hill is here, and for many years, we've, we've put on a number of events during February for Black History Month, and we've asked Sean to come and just give a presentation about what is taking place this year.
Yes, so this year's been another wonderful year of Black History Month planning for Lewis and Clark Community College. I was involved with the planning of these events along with Jared Hennings, Crystal Robinson, and also Tandra Taylor. And what especially makes these events successful is that faculty members not only gave input on what event should occur, but also brought their classes to these events. So, we had really good attendance so far this year, even though the month isn't even over yet. One of the big things that we had is Rennie Knott was on campus last week, and several students, Rennie Knott is a broadcaster with KSDK. Several students were there asking him numerous questions about his job, about sports, about how he got into the field. So, there were lots of students there from the radio broadcasting program, as well as students who are just interested in communication, and then just people who are fans of his work. We've had a blues band, the big George Brock Junior Band, Soul Food Dinner, which was actually supposed to be on the 5th of February, was rescheduled because of the weather. That was actually today, along with the student art show. We had a great turnout for student art show. Students, faculty members, as well as students from the Montessori School all came by to look at the art today. Mad City Money was an event that's an interactive game where we brought talent searching upward-bound students, as well as general students to that event. It was actually, took place in this room, and the idea is students walk around, they set up a budget. I participated in the past, but not this year. In previous years, I was the guy who walked around with bills that they were not expecting, so people would run away from me. I love that part of the game. I get to tell them their washing machine broke you $100. We had a judge, speak associate Judge Veronica Armuti. That always goes over really well with our paralegal program. There's an Underground Railroad bus tour happening later this week. People don't realize the extent to which the Underground Railroad, that went through this community, and there are several buildings which still have underground passages and hiding places that were part of the Underground Railroad. DC Cooper is coming later next week. He's a very popular speaker who's been here multiple times. Our communications professors bring their students. And then, we also are finishing out the month with a drumming ensemble, which again, has a great deal of support from our music faculty. And after the March discussion, which focuses on civil rights, both in the 50s and 60s and also now. And then, we have a musical showcase featuring our own gospel choir, very talented Lewis and Clark students, and then also the Great Rivers Choral Society. We also have a blood drive and then a screaming of the film The Hate U Give, as well as a dramatic performance, performance by the SIUE Black Theater Workshop. And again, what makes me most proud of this month is that it's a success because people throughout the campus are part of it, people throughout the campus support it, and it's, it's another way to bring community members onto the campus as well. Questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Up next is our Director of Career and Veteran Services, Terry Lane, and I think he maybe has a big announcement for us. I'll let him share.
It's my birthday. No, it's not, no. No, no, not that big. Okay, so, I do run Career and Veteran Services. I'll give you a kind of a short overview of what we're doing lately. We serve students in a variety of ways. We have my office, which is next to Financial Aid. We have Career Resource Center and a Veterans Resource Center, which is located in Caldwell Hall by the Student Services Hub. And we have a, an office in Edwardsville at the Nelson Campus, a Veterans Resource Center, and a Career Resource Center in one office there. We just opened last year. So, we try to, you know, make services available and, and have ourselves readily available to contact by students. In Career Services, we provide lots of information to students, job search, resume work, interviewing skills, practice. We post jobs online and on campus bulletin boards. We bring employers to campus. We manage the State of Illinois Cooperative Work Study Program, which, a grant we get every year, after the budget impasse anyway, which reimburses employers who hire our students. And we provide information on WEOHA, the Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act, which a lot of our students use to help pay their tuition and fees to go to school here. We have quite a few students every semester involved in that program. That's in Madison, Bonn, Jersey, Calhoun, operating out of Wood River, and then we have an office out of Carlinville that handles the northern counties. So, we cover all of our counties with that program. And we have an annual job fair. The job fair this year is coming up April 15th. It's always in the first part of April. We'll probably limit that to about 80 or 85 employers. We have had as many as 113 in the past. So, we have a lot of employer interest. Usually have about 300 or 350 job seekers show up, so, right now, in a, in a time when some people don't think job fairs are working that much, because a lot of people go online, there are a lot of employers looking for people right now, so we still have a good turnout from employers and job seekers. So, we'll continue that as long as it becomes, or as long as it stays active. In Veteran Services, we have about 200 veterans, service members, active duty, spouses, dependents right now. It's been going down a little bit over the years because of the downturn in the services, letting people out and not needing as many, although I just heard that the Army's staffing up again. So, it's a constant roller coaster for in and out of the military. We provide all kinds of assistance in our office and the financial aid on State of Illinois and VA educational benefits, as well as employment and referrals to community organizations. I'm in close contact with organizations, not just the VFW and the American Legion, but also the Veterans Assistance Commissions in Madison County and Jersey County. also the Veterans Assistance Commissions in Madison County and Jersey County. So we provide a lot of referrals. I work closely with faculty members and staff to help resolve issues that come up with veterans, and there are, just like any other student, there are those all the time. We also have an emergency loan fund. You guys have probably heard about that now. In the past, Dwight Wertz started this fund with the help of the President's Council of the Foundation, so we have this ongoing revolving fund where veterans and their families, if need be, can borrow money tax interest-free and then pay it back, and they can pay for rent, books, car payment, help pay their tuition until their Veterans Benefits arrive. It's pretty much wide open. Mr. Wertz set it up that way, and it's worked really well. And it's still working today. We have a Veterans Club on campus. It's, we, we welcome anyone who's not a veteran to take part. We have, every once in a while, have a few people that are interested, mostly vets. We do blood drives every semester, usually follow the Black Student Association blood drive. We each have one each semester. And we also do two large blood drives with Casey 95 radio station out of St. Louis. Those take in about 300 or more units apiece, so in the summer and winter, we have each one of those. So total, we bring in about 750 units of blood in our drives. Let's see, we have usually a State of Illinois organ and donor tissue rep shows up for those drives, and that's usually a good thing for people to take advantage of. The club also collects shoes for the Shoe Crew Water Project, eyeglasses for the Lions Club, toys for Toys for Tots, and we volunteer bell ringing at Salvation Army. The Vets Club also delivers leftovers from the dining services to the Salvation Army and the Community Hope Center in Cottage Hills, Bethelto area. And I may not have mentioned, we sell donuts a couple of times a semester, so that's how we make our money. We sell donuts, we take some donations. Last year, we were able to donate back $1,000 to community organizations, Crisis Food Center, Jefferson Barracks Hospital, John Cochran, Salvation Army, places like that. So we're pretty proud of that. Also, each year, I work with enrollment services, especially Kent, Financial Aid, Angela, institutional research, Brad and Dennis, to put together a military-friendly school survey. We've been doing that since 2010. We just found out today, Lori said, that we were able to get that designation again this year, so we've been getting that since fall of 2010. That was the first thing I did when I came here in fall of 2010, was put this thing together, and it's gotten worse every year. They, they, they make the criteria harder and harder and harder. So this year, there were a little over 1,000 institutions who applied, 625 were able to get the designation. Last year, it was 11 or 1,200, and 700 and something people were designated, so it's, it's pretty tough to get in. So it's, it's definitely a group effort around here. A lot of people, you know, provide these services to veterans, it's an attitude, and it comes through when we have a survey like this. ROTC, that's kind of my presentation, if you have any questions. I have one question I got in advance that I'm going to answer, and that's kind of how we interface on campus with the ROTC. Reserve Officer Training Corps, each branch has something called ROTC. We deal directly with SIUE right now because they are the only ROTC unit in our area immediately. There used to be an Air Force ROTC unit there, and now it's at St. Louis University. They have a satellite office there. So anybody that comes in, I refer them directly to a recruiter there, because I don't, I'm not a recruiter and don't want anybody to think that I am. Plus, they have lots and lots of intricacies in their contracting and things like that. However, we do have one or two students every year that inquire. I think the last student we had that actually enrolled was last year, and he ended up going from here to, I think it was Eastern, to a four-year school, so he transferred away from here. There is a tuition waiver that ROTC students can get, at least through the Army ROTC, for here, and then there's a community college, it's called the ROTC something, Community College Program, ROTC Community College Transfer Scholarship, that we have. Angela actually fills out the paperwork, that will help a student who is in ROTC here go to a four-year school. Okay, so there's, there's help for people who want to get into the program. And I was reading up on this to kind of prepare for the question. These branches get a lot of their officers from ROTC still, so I didn't realize it was quite as high, the numbers that they do get, but there's a lot of people that go through ROTC and end up commissioned officers. I think that's about it. I think I might have made some work for myself doing this, because I talked to the recruiter at ROTC at Edwardsville, and I wanted to come over and do some outreach and recruiting on campus, so I guess I'm going to have a little extra work to do with that, but it's all good. Any questions about any of that, kind of quickly, but?
Yeah, this is a good presentation. Thank you. So are this, is this mostly for students or for anybody in the community, all of these things, would you say?
The ROTC program?
No, the, all of these things that you talked about, like career services and all that, just mainly for students?
It is.
People enrolled here?
Yeah, it is mainly for students. However, we've not turned anyone away who's called us up and said, hey, I could use some help with a resume.
Mm-hmm, okay, good.
Yeah, we do that. We don't advertise that fact, but we do do that.
You may have said this, I don't know, the 200 veterans, so like, is it about 200 students too? And what age, what's the typical age?
Age, well, most people that go in the military nowadays go in for four years.
Uh-huh.
So they're going to be, you know, early twenties at least, but lots of our vets stay in for six or eight or a little bit longer. Some stay in as a career, but not that many, so it's, it's not unlikely for us to have anywhere from the, you know, 22 to 28 range coming in.
Mm-hmm, okay.
You mentioned Dwight Wertz Assistance Fund?
Yeah.
And I believe if I understood Dwight correctly, you know, he, he and others ceded that fund.
They did.
But now, and the, the service members are asked if they can to, to pay that back, but they're not hounded for it or anything.
No.
But he, he said that that fund is now self-supporting. There's, they don't, they're not having to put any more money into it. It's, so it's just a, it's kind of a nice thing to say, it's a revolving fund where veterans are helping each other.
We were, well, I'm at surprise, a little surprised. We get a really good return on payback. I mean, we're 70% or so at least, so better than most of the funds we have. Yeah, it has really saved some, some hardships around here.
Do you have any, any reason to maintain contact with the people that have gone through Lewis and Clark and now they're out and?
The way that usually happens is, I keep everybody on a, on email list. I use it for sending out job information, Lewis and Clark information, you know, it's time to enroll, do time through your FAFSA, that kind of stuff. Or there's a, there's a new Veterans Administration benefit that you should find out about. I tell them about the burn pit registry, stuff like that, that's more pertinent to younger veterans. But I also send out stuff that they talk to their friends about, their uncles, their dads, and things like that. So that's the only way I really keep in touch with them, and I get very few people that say they want to come off of it. And that, that list is like 500 something people, so.
Yeah, that's good. That just creates more and more friends for the college.
Yeah, I think so.
Any idea what the unemployment rate is for, for new veterans?
No, but.
Is it higher than?
For several years, it was higher. And then it dropped down. I think it's pretty much what it is for, you know, non-veterans, close anyway. I haven't seen anything lately because it's so low for everybody, but it, it did kind of even out over time.
You know, so it seems like they, they say on television that, that so many of our veterans are coming back with, with problems like PTSD, for example. And I know, realize this isn't necessarily near Baileywick, but what in our area is happening to help those people, those veterans?
So if a veteran student comes in, or somebody from the community that's referred, I've had lots of people refer friends, you know, who, people who work here or who go here, say, can you talk to this person? If it's a student, I get with Renee Bauer first, because she's our student counselor. She and I have worked with lots of veterans over the years, so we try to figure out what's going on, and then we either get in touch with a VA hospital, psychiatrist, psychologist, or I like the VA Vet Center. They used to be in East St. Louis, now they're in Swansea. They, these are combat vets who counsel combat vets, and they also do family counseling. So they pretty much cover the gamut, and they're really good. They, they come out to the community, they have outreach workshops in the evening some places. They had one in Wood River for a while. They go on Scott Air Force Base, they're at the Veterans Assistance Commission in Edwardsville, so they're very in tune with what's going on.
I have a question about the job fair.
Yeah.
When you say there are approximately 350 employers that show up, is it a variety of trades? Are they local, or is it just kind of a mixed bag of whoever decides to, to come?
Right. So the, the employer list is about 80, 80, 85. The 300 is the people, the job seekers, yeah. But, yeah, we run everywhere from Ameren and Illinois American Water to, you know, Phillips 66, down to Mosquito Joe's trying to find people for summer help. We, we limit it a little bit because we don't have the space to take in everybody. We had the 113 whenever we used the Riverbend Arena before it was remodeled, so we had space then, but we usually have a lot more people that want to come than can come, but it's a wide variety. Recruiters are there, so it's a really a wide variety, yeah. That's good. We're going to use the Riverbend Arena coming up in the summer for a Casey Drive. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brett, I'm going to pass this on to the Enrollment Task Force Commander.
No, thank you. After last month's board meeting, we have developed, just reporting out that we've developed an interdisciplinary group of team members from across campus to address the, the topic of enrollment at Lewis and Clark. This group includes members from enrollment, from recruitment, advising, faculty, there are deans, institutional research, finance, marketing, student support services, and administrative members. So we, we run the gambit. We, we wouldn't turn anybody away. The group has decided to meet weekly on Friday afternoons to continue what has become an ongoing conversation about enrollment, and the general rule is that there's no topics that are left off the table. We have to be able to come and converse. The model that we're adopting as a group is similar to the one that's been used successfully with the Student Success Team, which is this idea of researching problems, developing pilot solutions to those problems, implementing the pilot, and then determining the effectiveness of whether that pilot worked or not, to determine if it's something you want to continue doing, to modify, or to stop. So overall, conversations have been invigorating and wide-ranging. This topic is obviously important to a great many people on this campus, and I personally would like to thank all of the people who are taking the time in the task force. This is a big commitment, you know, and it's also on a Friday afternoon, which is not the best time to hold a meeting. But they are, they're driving the discussion, and it's a commitment to the school that's driving it, and that's really fantastic. One of the motivating factors in these discussions that's going on is the commitment that keep, keep reminding this group, that we have made to the Higher Learning Commission as part of our reaccreditation process to address enrollment as a topic. And so that, that kind of is a motivating factor in these conversations. While we've been discussing these perspectives on enrollment so far, we've, I would generally say we've been, had some recurring themes that have come up. First force would be like course formats, you know, traditional versus web blended, online, evening, weekends. What, how are we offering our courses? What kind of courses are we offering, and in what formats are they being offered? Scheduling keeps coming up as a very important topic. We have a anecdotal feeling that we're offering courses perhaps not when students need them the most, and that we have programs that are competing against each other and offering courses that are required for both programs at the same time, so students don't have the opportunity to take both of their required courses. And then there's the, the general questions about what's the most effective schedule to offer so that we can gain the most enrollment. Monday, Wednesday, Friday classes versus Tuesday, Thursday classes versus maybe a Monday, Wednesday format that would eliminate Friday instruction completely. So we're looking at a lot of different options and pieces of information there. Also, expanding evening and weekend offerings as, as demand would indicate. Another topic that has come up is the role of high school partnership and the dual credit program. There are questions surrounding the size and scope of this program, its relationship to on-campus enrollment and revenues, and the financial aid implications for students who take a lot of high school partnership courses and may come out, and it might impact their eligibility because there are limits on credit hours for the, for your financial aid eligibility. So if they come out preloaded with a whole bunch, 30 or 30 or more high school partnership hours, it gives them less opportunity to make mistakes as they move on, because they'll rapidly approach limits into their financial aid eligibility. So we want to be cautious of that. The other topic that's come out in general is the need, particularly in conversations where we're like, well, how do we know this, or how do we, how do we figure this out, is the need for data, and more and better. We, we are a good data-informed school. We do collect a lot of data, but this conversation in particular makes us realize that we need clear and consistent reporting for metrics, and what those metrics are, we have to agree on what, what does success mean and what does it look like? We have to make sure that we're asking the right questions about enrollments, and to evaluate the success or failure of modern programs, we have to make sure we're collecting the right data to determine whether it's effective or not. Most importantly, and I think this came up in, in the last meeting, is we realize that we're, we're not incredibly good, or we don't have a, a track record of soliciting customer feedback, so we need to be reaching out to our current, current students, current high school partnership students, to solicit information about them, about what would they find appealing, about our schedules, what courses they would be interested in, when they would like to see them, collect some really true customer, I mean, we've all been inundated with email surveys on, on vendors that we've used. We've not tended to do that, so I think that's something that we really need to look at in order to get a better idea and understanding of what we, that we're making sure we're offering courses and programs that are what people desire. Overall, there are two action items that we have, that we've begun and that are in process right now. The first one is that we have consulted with Robin Schwartz, Emily Bothwell, on the implications of the modifications to the Dual Quality Credit Act from 2019. There's competing ideas about what exactly our obligations and rights are under that rat, under that act, I mean, when we're offering programs and services in high school partnership. And so we need clarification from, from Emily. She was really great talking with us, and she'll be providing us with some feedback on that, hopefully in the next week or so. The second action that the, the task force has done is they've identified some internal funding sources to bring a, an enrollment management firm on campus for an initial evaluation. They'll spend a day and a half on campus, taking a look at, it's basically an opportunity analysis. They'll look at our strengths and our weaknesses. What are we doing that's great? And they'll look at us compared to peer institutions and best practices in the industry. And so the firm that we're, we're working is with is Ruffalo Noah Levitz. They'll be on campus March 4th and 5th. They'll be visiting with a wide range of people on campus, students, all of those offices that I mentioned before that are already part of this group, and then they'll provide a report out on what they think, where we could use some improvement and things we're doing well. And that's what we've done this month. Any questions?
How many are on your task force?
Well, that's the one piece of information I didn't write down. I'm going to say it's in the 10 to 12, Lori, is it like 10 to 12? Yeah, it's, it's a pretty good site. We wanted to make sure that we solicit a lot of people. And I should point out too, that it's not meant to be exclusive in that, you know, if people want to come and participate, they're welcome to come and participate, or if there's a need to bring somebody in who has specialty knowledge for a single meeting, and we can find out what that means, they can come and participate in the meeting, and then maybe need to come to the next ones if they've answered all the questions. Yes, the new recruiter is there. We have three or four from enrollment, and three or four enrollment advising.
Thank you. Next, the action items. First one, W, approval of grant or sponsored contract opportunities. Is there a motion to approve that?
I'll make a motion.
And Bob seconds. Any discussion or information that we need? No questions? Roll call.
Tulgetzky?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Watson? Hyon?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Hanfelder?
Yes.
Item X, authorization to enter to a third-party electrical energy supply contract, pages 350 and 351. Is there a motion to approve that? Bob makes a motion. Is her second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Call for the vote?
Tulgetzky?
Yes.
Watson? Rust?
Yes.
Hanfelder?
Yes.
Hyon? Johnson?
Yes.
Motion passed. Y, expert panel required by Mental Health Early Action on Campus Act, page 352. Is there a motion to approve that? Move to approve? Chuck made the motion. Is her second?
I'll second.
Julie, second. Any discussion?
Just, just one question. I know that Kent had said there was some question about the Illinois defining the scope. In other words, what, what student groups are, are included in that? Has that been defined yet or? Okay.
Can I just say a few things about it? Would that be okay? So my name's Jill Lorsbach. I'm the Director of Student Development and Counseling. And I just wanted to say a few words about why this is so important. Do I need to use my teacher voice? Yes, this isn't working, okay. So we live in very challenging times. Our students are at particularly high risk. A national survey recently found that one in four college students are treated for or diagnosed with a mental illness. Is it working now? Okay. One in five students have considered suicide and 75% of all mental health conditions are diagnosed before age 24. According to the Center for Collegiate Mental Health, more than 60% of college students have overwhelming anxiety and 40% feel depressed and have difficulty functioning. Armed with these statistics, this law has four purposes. One, to identify and connect students with mental health resources. Two, to increase access to mental health resources. Three, to empower students through support and training. And four, to reduce administrative policies on student seeking leave for mental health conditions. So the law requires the Board of Trustees of each public college and university to designate an expert panel to develop and implement policies and procedures that advise students, faculty, and staff on the proper procedures for identifying and addressing the needs of students exhibiting symptoms of mental health conditions. The individuals who have agreed to be a part of this panel are Dr. Chad Keller, Professor of Psychology; Dr. Kathleen White, Professor of Psychology; Dr. Sean Hill, Vice President of Student Engagement; Terry Austin, Licensed Clinical Professional Counselor, Adult Education; Renee Bauer, Licensed Clinical Professional Counselor, Student Development and Counseling; and myself, Jill Lorsbach, Director of Student Development. I invited Renee Bauer and Terry Austin to come and just speak with you for a minute to let you know some personal examples of students whose whole trajectories have been changed by this, of mental health support they received on campus.
Thank you. I'm Renee Bauer. Okay. My name is Renee Bauer. I'm a Licensed Clinical Professional Counselor. I began my career in 1981 and for 20 years I was a counselor in the community. I came here in 1999. Oh, I'm, I'm so sorry. So sorry. I came to the college in 1999 and I've been here for 20 years now. We are a microcosm of what's out in the community, so any mental health situation you would see in the community, we see it here on campus. We think college students, they're young, they have no problems. They do. We have the same things that are out there. Our faculty and staff are on the front line. They oftentimes notice situations or they, students will confide in them and then the faculty and staff will then come to us and confide in us. And that's how we get a lot of our referrals. The other wonderful thing is that students are for students and students will refer students and actually bring them to our office and say, this person needs to talk to you. That person may not have come if their friend had not brought them. The last thing is that some students are brave enough to come on their own and I applaud them because it's a very hard thing to walk over that threshold of a counselor's office thinking they're just going to know everything about me and I'm not so sure I want that. We see all sorts of things from anxiety attacks. We have, students have anxiety attacks in the classroom. We help the instructor to know what to do. We instruct those students to sit next to the door so that they need to get out quickly. They can. We all have all sorts of strategies for them so that they can be a productive and successful student. We have things such as domestic violence, harassment. Students on campus sometimes are harassed by another student, sometimes someone in the community. We also have cyber talking, stalking. That's a new, maybe it's not so new, but it is a big one. People feel anonymous when they're typing and it's very dangerous on the other end. We have homelessness. I got a call from Angela Weaver today that there's a student who's homeless and we're looking into resources. That is a very difficult situation to, to solve. I just wanted to tell you that I've kept statistics since 2005, 2006 academic year and the lowest number of students that we've seen in a year, I guess for me, these are my stats for myself, 389 students. And last year was our largest year. We had 631 students who came to see me. We have a depression screening every year in the fall. We, we have approximately 100 students who attend that. And last year, we had 42 students, almost half, who were referred for services. Sometimes that's in-house, that would be me. Sometimes it's out of house and we find a therapist in the community. The, we also have students who have had suicidal ideation in the last two weeks that we discover at that depression screening. And last year, it was 42, that was, sorry, 16. 13 who had attempted and 16 who had the ideation for it. I thought what I would do is just tell you about two particular students that we've had. One was several years ago, but he is still very near to my heart. This was an athlete on the soccer team, seemed to be doing fine at the end of the first semester. Let me backtrack and say, he was a first-generation student away at school. At the time, we didn't have the apartments next door, so they lived in an apartment in the community. And it was free rein, the first time to ever be away from home, managing their own money, et cetera, et cetera. This young man failed all of, or found out he was going to be failing all of his courses. He wrote in his notebook a goodbye letter to every single member in his family. His roommate just happened to pick up the book and saw it and thought, oh my goodness, gave it to the coach. The coach called me. I went to the student's next class and asked him if he would come down and see me. And I said, I think we ought to talk. And he said, I think I know what you want to talk to me about. One of the things that I said to him is, yes, you failed and that's, I feel badly for you, but we know why it happened. This can get better. And let me tell you, I'm a mother. And I would much rather have a son who had failed all his classes than to not have a son at all. And my guess is your mother feels the very same that I do. And there are ways to tell her in which she can understand as well as know how this can improve. He thought he would disappoint absolutely everyone in his family. He was the first one ever to go to college and they were so proud. And now he had to go home and tell them this information. So I coached him on how to tell her he was able to do that. He came back the next semester and he made As and Bs. At the end of his two years here, he was a soccer player. He wanted so badly to go to Maryvale University. The coach introduced him to the coach there. He did not make it. And he wrote me an email. He said, Renee, I just, I don't know what to do. I'm so distraught. And he almost fell back into where he was before because this was his dream. And I said, where one door closes, my guess is another door is going to open. Let's look for that other door. He was accepted by Umpsel. He became the captain of the team. He loved it. He became the president of the sociology club. He graduated and he's now working in a business in the community and is working on his master's degree. A lovely, lovely young man. My second student is a student who had been depressed for many, many years and had never been diagnosed. She was so afraid that if she went somewhere, they would say, I'm crazy. And you know what that means? They'll put you away forever and a day. They don't anymore. They'll only keep you for so long because it's expensive. People don't know that. So she thought she was going to be locked away. I said, let's get you some help, get a proper diagnosis. We'll see if you need some medication or not. I'll backtrack a minute and say, she kept missing classes and instructors would say she's missing, we don't know why. And that was my first contact with her. We got her connected with resources and she went very faithfully to the resource on the outside and to me. She graduated and she is now at the University of Illinois and she's in the engineering program. I stay in touch with her. She is doing very well because she found a counselor there on campus and is continuing to meet with her regularly. There are many, many stories that I could tell you. These were two of the most impactful for me that made a, a huge impression. So I thank you. I'll turn it over to my colleague, Terry Austin. She has some stories as well.
Hi. In my work, I've been here for about five years. I'm in the Adult Education Department, mostly working with students that are working towards their GED and also transitioning into college classes. And because of the high need, I'm also serving students that are not in adult education because Renee's only one person and there is such a need. Most of our students come here with issues. We all have them, but some of them have so many and they don't have a lot of resources. So many of our students come in and what we see is maybe some problem behavior or lack of attendance. But many times, that's because of psychological issues, mental health issues, homelessness, waters off at home, lack of support. And they need someone that they can come to, to talk about these things so that they don't have to give up school. A lot of times, students that are struggling will just drop out, lose their financial aid. And when they decide to come back, they're on probation and they owe money. Without that early intervention, a lot of these students who could go on and do great things may just flounder. A lot of our students in adult ed have families that have a lot of drug problems, alcoholism, and sometimes they follow in their family's footsteps, but sometimes they see the problem, but they need help to figure out a different way. I have worked with a number of students who have been suicidal. I've helped people get to the hospital. Just before I came in here, really my daughter's best friend, I'm sorry, I'm going to get choked up. My daughter has bipolar disorder, my oldest daughter, and she's attempted suicide before. And so I know how that feels to possibly lose your child. Her best friend just posted on Facebook that she wanted to kill herself. She's 24. She's a student, not here. And I had to send her a message before I came in here. And I had to send her a message before I came in here that I could link her to some help. We can literally save these kids' lives, not just their education, but they have to know that there's somebody there. And part of this law is to let them know, more outreach, more information. Because a lot of times, they're just posting it online. They're not talking to anyone and they don't know that there's someplace they can go. I think that getting that information out there and them knowing somebody cares and it might just be an instructor who tells us which has happened. You know, I've had several students tell me, you saved me. You know, and, but all of us play a role, everyone that deals with teachers. Part of this law is about educating people so that the people that deal with students, whether it's a cafeteria worker or anyone, if you see that a student is struggling, you can, would know what to say. And so I think it's just critical that we help our students to get the help that they need so they can be successful. You know, I've worked with students that have been in domestic violence situations, helped them get into shelter, helped them figure out how to navigate because they don't know. They just don't know. And if we just refer them out to an agency, they may not be seen for weeks. And even then, you know, when I refer people, I make sure that I call with them. I make sure that I help them figure out how do I get there? You know, there's so many obstacles to get help. Insurance, money, transportation. And so I think it's just so critical to have these services here and they're free. You know, it's part of them being a student and they are so grateful for it. So that's what I have to say. If you have any questions, please feel free. Sure. You're welcome. Thanks.
Tulgetzky?
Yes.
Hanfelder?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Hyon?
Yes.
Tulgetzky?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Hyon?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Hanfelder?
Yes.